Everyone, and welcome to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting this April 22nd, 2025. I am pleased this evening that we have Mason Upshaw of Noonday Baptist Church. He will be providing our invocation, and that will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Officer Joseph Jones of Precinct 3 if you are here. Wonderful, you can join us up front, and as soon as our Minister Upshaw is done with his invocation, you can go ahead and step up and lead us in the pledge. For those of you willing and able, please rise for both our invocation and our pledge.
Would you please bow your heads with me? Gracious Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here and serve our community through the work of this board today. And we pray, Lord, that you would grant us wisdom in our deliberations today, that you would put a clarity on our minds and that you would unite us in purpose. Heavenly Father, we pray that you would give us the resolve to honor those whom we represent, and that you would give us the power to act with humility, mutual respect, and grace and peace. In your name, amen.
Please join me in singing the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you again, Mason Upshaw. He's the Minister of Praise and Worship at Noonday Baptist Church, and thank you Officer Jones once again of Precinct 3. Our meeting is now called to order. Okay, first up this evening, we do have our presentations, and we have a number of them. I will kick off the first two. Of those of you who are here for National Work Zone Awareness, please join me up front, and also those who are here as part of National County Government Month in Cobb. This is a work zone here, so it's good to see you dressed appropriately. Good evening, I'm so glad that you are here. April 21st to the 25th kicks off construction season, and so we are promoting safe driving in work zones that are on our streets, our roads, and our highways. The 2020-24 theme is "Respect the Zone So We All Get Home." It highlights the shared responsibility of drivers and workers to prevent tragedies. As some of us, we may be trying to race through those slowed-down scenes, there are actually lives out there that are doing the work on our behalf and that we want to see be just as safe as we are. Work zones are dangerous. In 2022, 891 people lost their lives in work zones. Most were drivers and passengers. But our highway workers, they also face serious risks. 94 workers died on road construction sites in 2022 due to occupational hazards. So there's some key safety reminders for all of us to be aware of: slow down, stay alert, and avoid distractions while driving through work zones. Cobb County, we are committed to protecting our roadway workers and maintaining infrastructure through the efforts of dedicated road maintenance crews and staff, some of which you see here this evening. And we ask for everyone to play a role in keeping everyone safe. Our residents, our businesses, and motorists, all of you are urged to please drive cautiously to keep Cobb County's roads safe for all. Thank you. This is our DOT manager. Would you like to address this matter?
I'd be glad to. Thank you Chairwoman for those words and the recognition. The folks that you see up here are all from our Road Maintenance Division, and they represent the more than 130 members of that staff that are out there every day working in the roadways. Highway worker is consistently one of the top 10 most dangerous jobs in the United States, and we just want to bring some attention and appreciate the recognition to encourage everyone. When you see lights of any kind, of course, blue lights, red lights, but we want to bring some attention to the amber lights. When you see those lights, just remember that the folks in that work zone, they have families that they want to get home to, they have lives, and they want to be able to work safely. So we just ask that you slow down in work zones, you watch out for the workers, and do your best to keep everyone safe. So thank you Chairwoman.
All right, and just stay up here because you'll be a part of our next presentation, and that is to recognize April as National County Government Month. Counties across the U.S. serve over 315 million Americans by providing essential services that build healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. Cobb County Government plays a role in public health, justice, administration, public safety, infrastructure, economic development, and more. Cobb County, like all counties, is committed to protecting and enhancing residents' well-being in efficient, cost-effective ways. Since 1991, the National Association of Counties has promoted National County Government Month to increase awareness of county programs and services. Again, April marks National County Government Month, and it's a time to recognize and celebrate the essential work of counties and their employees. So please join me as we recognize our employees, as we encourage you to participate in local events that are occurring around Cobb County to learn more about local government as it serves your daily lives. Again, this is the 22nd day of April 2025, and this goes to our illustrious county manager, Dr. McMorris.
First of all, I would like to thank our employees who do an excellent job every single day. But for them, we would not be able to be one of the best counties in this state. I'd also like to thank the Board of Commissioners for supporting our staff and our employees, so we appreciate this honor, and we look forward to serving you.
Very good, so we'll all huddle up for a photo. Alrighty, next up, we have a proclamation designating April also as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. For those of you who are part of this presentation, please join Commissioner Gamble up front.
Safe Path Abuses is community free of child abuse. We've served over 27,000, probably close to 30,000 now in the 30 years that I have been here. One in five children suffer from some type of abuse before the age of 18, and we want to make sure we're there for them. But we want to jump ahead of that in terms of National Child Abuse Prevention Month. We want to make sure we're doing all we can to prevent that.
Some of the signs that you might see from a child when they've been abused are withdrawal, isolation. Children can also present normally and happily as if nothing's going on, so it's just important that you're always communicating with your child. I think that months like this for child abuse awareness are important because it impacts so many people in our community.
One of my favorite things about Safe Path is that it is very clear from the moment you arrive that the center is child-friendly and child-focused. All of that really helps create comfort for a child in probably what's one of the most difficult, if not the most difficult, moment of their life. This month, we're focusing on our Pin Wheels for Prevention campaign. So we use the pinwheel because it's a symbol of childhood innocence. Seeing that blue pinwheel all over social media really just helps that create that awareness. We'd like it to be as recognizable as that pink breast cancer ribbon is.
Children truly are our future, and for parents, pay attention, make the call. It's not your responsibility as a parent to know whether abuse occurred, it's your responsibility to make that call if you suspect. And for children, you can walk up to our door, you can call us on the phone, we will help you.
Whereas children are essential to Cobb County's future success and well-being, yet they remain among our most vulnerable citizens. And whereas child abuse, including neglect, the most common form, impacts children across all communities with alarming national statistics showing a report made every 10 seconds and more than five child fatalities per day. And whereas, since 1995, Safe Path have served over 30,000 child victims and their non-offending caregivers, continuing to lead efforts in advocacy, treatment, and prevention in our community. And therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, does hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Cobb County and commend Safe Path Children's Advocacy Center Incorporated for its outstanding service and dedication to protecting and uplifting the lives of children. This is the 22nd day of April 2025.
Hey, I just want to say that it means so much to us to be surrounded here by our team. To deal with child abuse in the community, it takes a multidisciplinary approach. So up here, you see members of law enforcement, the DA's office, DFAGs, and people from Safe Path. It takes all of us to deal with this, and then having the support of the community, of course, is up and above everything. And Commissioner Gamble, we thank you so much for giving this to us, and we want to thank you all for having us here and being a consistent support.
Alrighty, next up, we have a presentation to the Wheeler Wildcats Varsity Boys Basketball Team. They are winners of the Georgia Class 6A State Championship. Can you please join Commissioner Brohl up front?
Ladies and gentlemen, the Wheeler Wildcats are in the house. Well, this is exciting to recognize the men's basketball team from Wheeler High School. This is their 10th championship, 6A State Championship, their sixth. So we are so excited to have you with us tonight and show you off. So I have a certificate for each of the So I have a certificate for each of the players, and they're in order of your number, not alphabetical, if that's okay. So I'm gonna have to read. You're gonna help me, please. Okay. So first up, we have number zero, Lemarian Lewis. Number one, Coda Suttle. Number two, Kevin Savage. Number three, Colvin Landry. Number five, Jacob Taylor. Number 10, Tyless Jordan. He's 6'9". It's awesome. No wonder y'all won the state championship. Number 11, Amari James. Congratulations. Number 12, Ashante Walker. Number 13, Dorian Starr. Congratulations. Number 14, Monsur McClain. Congratulations. Number 15, LJ Montaban. Number 22, Zek Preston. You're 6'9" too? Wow. And the GOAT of all time, Michael Jordan's number 23. Everybody in the world knows I'm Tar Heel, number one. So I love Michael Jordan, everybody knows that. Now, we have the coaches, and we're gonna save the head coach to last. We have, oh no, he's first, I'm sorry. Coach Larry Thompson. Congratulations. Assistant Coach, Darnell Shepherd. Congratulations. Assistant Coach, Ric- Richarde McMath. Richard DaE Thrun. Assistant Coach Lloyd May. And Assistant Coach Josh Astorita. Close enough, huh? Assistant Coach Garland Jones. Congratulations. And Assistant Coach Frank Penson. Well, Coach Thompson, would you like to say a few words?
Thank y'all for coming out. God bless. We want to appreciate y'all for having us here tonight. The work that these guys do doesn't go unnoticed. I'm glad they get an opportunity to stand before the community and be acknowledged because they work hard and they earned everything they got this year. We appreciate y'all and thank you.
Thank you. And Principal Paul Gilliam is with us, too, so would you like to say a few words? Is this yours?
Sure. Sure, thank you. Commissioners, thank you. Appreciate being recognized with my team here. They keep me active every day. Most of them are in my office every day on a good note, not a bad note, but I appreciate the coaching staff and our athletic director, Barry Bowdre, he's right over there. So thank the community for the support. Wildcats have a lot going on, so if you ever want to know what is going on at Wheeler, stop by and I'll give you a personal tour of the campus. So anytime, just let me know.
Thank you. Okay, Wheeler Wildcats, we need a picture. And by the way, they're the only high school in Cobb that has won 10 or more championships.
Less tall people in the front. Parents, come on up if you want to take a photo. Athletes, you could stay right there. I see some parents.
I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the mom of the group, Gabby Franklin. We appreciate you.
And I neglected to recognize Barry, the athletic director. I know, I know you did. I'm sorry. We'll get you a certificate too. The principal didn't get one either. Thank you all for being here and keep up the good work, and hopefully, we'll do this again next year with another championship. All right? I'm counting on you.
They win. That's amazing.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, before we get into our public hearings for tonight, just want to remind everyone of our mission and vision statements of the county. Our mission being to make Cobb the best place to live and work through an efficient, effective, and responsive government that delivers quality services. And our vision is to create a county that is thriving, innovative, and a safe community that enhances quality of life for the well-being of all, and this is done through a core value set of commitment, diversity, integrity, and teamwork. So with that, we are now at our first public hearing for this evening. Have our Department of Transportation Director walk us through this and the next public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Drew Wrestler, Cobb DOT. We do have two public hearings for your consideration this evening. CobbLink, as a service of Cobb DOT, provides two circulator routes within the Cumberland area, Northern Green Circulator and Southern Blue Circulator. Based on staff analysis, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners consider elimination of the Green Circulator for the following reasons. The Green Circulator operates with approximately 37% less ridership than the Blue. Key destinations along the Green Circulator overlap other CobbLink fixed routes, and a modified and improved Blue Circulator is under evaluation to increase operational efficiency of the circulator network in tandem with this proposed elimination. CobbLink is a recipient of funding from the Federal Transit Administration and therefore must complete a service equity analysis before considering any modifications. The analysis must be conducted in accordance with the county's Title VI plan to identify any potential negative impacts of the service changes. Prior to BSC consideration for adoption of any modifications, the service equity analysis includes public input and involvement. Input is being collected through the following: public commenting period between April 10th and May 9th, an in-person meeting on April 17th, another in-person meeting scheduled for April 30th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. at the Cobb Chamber, an online meeting on May 6th, a TAB review, Transit Advisory Board review on April 28th. Initially, tonight's public hearing is part of that public involvement process. Therefore, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing to present the service equity analysis regarding proposed service modifications of the CobbLink Green Circulator Service.
Thank you. With our public hearings, we'll take an unlimited number of speakers who will have up to three minutes to address this matter and this matter only. I'll go ahead and open it up for our first speaker, and if any of you are here for the first time, please note that when you present to the board, to please state your name prior to speaking.
Hey there, I'm JT Jackson, District 2 resident, live off of Acres Mill Road, so not quite in the route of the circulator currently, but just my comment on the circulator routes. The cuts are kind of disappointing. Metro Atlanta is growing, and Cobb is part of Metro Atlanta, so it's encouraging to hear that a modification to the Blue route is underway. I would just request that before we do any cuts to existing service, we have that secondary service ready to go, lined up, or some type of idea of where the funds that would be allocated to that cut service would go. There's a lot of bus stops that could use stuff like benches, covering, and I feel like, you know, if we are going to lose service, but we improve what's already there, that could be a good compromise. But yes, I would just like to make sure that we have a plan in place before any cuts happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Green Circulator, potentially getting cut.
Go ahead and state your name again.
Sorry, my name is Sam Foster. Green Circulator potentially getting cut, not fun, but sadly, given what happened last year, funding is not plentiful. We're going to have to look at certain areas where we're going to have to reorganize things. I think the circulators are a good place to look, but as was mentioned before, I would prefer for when this, if this service were to go away, something immediately would follow that would be better than this current service. We've gone through transit cuts before, like the East Cobb Line over a decade ago, and it doesn't seem like anything really improved after that point. I would, I think it's essential that when we do these cuts, we have to look forward not only this, to later this year, but five to 10 years down the line, looking to see if, is this going to increase ridership, or is what going to, is what is going to come after going to serve the community better? I know there's talk of the Cumberland sweep. I'm not really a fan of what they have going on there right now, but if we just had something lined up that we know would be able to serve this area better, could be microtransit, I don't know, but if it were to start after this gets cut, kind of like Marta's Next Gen Bus Network where they're cutting routes, but that service is immediately starting after they're cutting those routes, and I guess I'll be up here to talk about the commuter routes after, but.
All right, thank you.
Donald Barth. Wow, here we are again after all that with the emsplost, and we're going to get rid of something. I know we have to cut the budget, and there's always a reason to cut the budget, but can you see the density in that area? Y'all are all familiar with the area. The density is amazing down there. If you can't make a bus run with that many people, you need to get out of the bus business. Now Cobb County doesn't need to get out of the bus business. So what is the solution to the problem? First of all, keep that green going as long as we have these things coming to Cobb County. We have the All-Star Game, and we have the World Cup. We've got to do something to get people interested in areas where the density is high enough to put them on the bus. Something tells me there's some piss-poor management in this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Rob Gillam. I'm, I don't really know, I missed a little bit about what was the green versus the blue lines, but I've been in Cobb County for about over 15 years now, and for quite a while, I worked downtown Atlanta in the Atlanta Federal Center, right across from Five Points, Marta, and when I was going into the office full-time, I would take the 100 bus from the Busby Park and ride down, and I understand that a lot of the reasons for these cuts are, at least one substantial reason for one proposed cut of eliminating, I believe it's the 100, the 101, and the 102 lines all going down towards Atlanta, is the analysis of ridership that was done in 2023 and 2024. Well, that, that information is no longer valid, as not only did the federal government decide that all federal employees must return to work full-time, eliminating all telework, but also state employees and city employees are also having to go back in, as well as other private industries. And on top of that, the first phase that has already started is just for the employees that live within a 50-mile radius of the offices. Starting next week, most employees who would live outside of that 50-mile range must also now go downtown. Now, one thing that was not mentioned is with the consolidation of the 100, 101, and 102 lines heading into Atlanta, they'll all be consolidated into the Express GA 484. Express GA is consolidating five additional lines, all into that one, which means between the two, this proposal will cut, will consolidate eight bus lines into one at a time when ridership is increasing. This is not a time to finalize cuts, this is a time to start re-studying and re-evaluating the bus ridership, at least for the next six months to a year, and then re-evaluate the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I just want to share that we do have two public hearings. This first one is with respect to the Green Circulator. The next one is with respect to the commuter service routes, but since you were going, I let you finish because we're going to get to the commuter service routes immediately after, but your points were well received, and if anybody else is here for those circulator routes that are being addressed in the next public hearing, please hang tight, we'll get to that shortly.
I might have some crossover, too. Christine Rosman. So actually, the gentleman that spoke just before me had some really good information, which is that ridership is going on the cusp of increasing now, which will change the scenario, but the, the fact that it's down like 81% from where it was pre-pandemic pandemic, there's, I think that we can do vouchers, can't we? Isn't it the people that do need the buses, can't we do vouchers? It would be a heck of a lot less in that case, and then also for cost for the taxpayers, and then, but I know that we have a lot of new buses that we've purchased over the last several years, so I think somebody said too, Donald said that it's like, we're not in the bus business, you know? We are here to provide infrastructure for the citizens, and, but when it is not cost-effective and it's like you have empty buses, and then you have all the staff that regardless of how many are riding the bus, that's pretty steep. And so, anyway, thanks.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker.
Good evening. My name's Craig Harfoot. Anyway, this week, I've been, was thinking about when I came to Atlanta in '73, and it was to try to find a job since everything sort of went south in Florida, and this reminds me a whole lot like it. And then I finally got a job with the state merit system, and it was like, this is when the Braves were in the Spaceship Stadium, the first Fulton County stadium. They couldn't fill it, they could not, you know, they never paid for that thing. The, that was when they had Nacahoma there, and some friend of mine was trying to sell corporate tickets. He couldn't sell them to save his life. But this year, I mean, you got to look at what's going on. Braves aren't going to win a game. They're really, and that's what they looked like then, too. And this is when Ted had them, and he was... And this is when Ted had them and he was using his TV and his advertising to support the whole thing. So what's different is $20 million salaries for losing team. Now, where's the equity in that? You know, the whole thing gets absurd and the buses, you know, for the stadium? The thing is, the people that'll have the money to go to these are like the sponsors. Like, I think I went once because the boss gave me some tickets. And they were good tickets with all the good amenities and the parking passes and all that. You know, those aren't going to be the problem. The people that need to ride a bus to get to it, they're not going to be coming if they're losing and the economy is really going south. So we need to be real careful with how we spend our money. And those little buses, I mean, even counties like Jefferson, Georgia, tiny county, they had all these little buses parked out there and it was for seniors. But you pretty much made an appointment and they took you somewhere. They didn't just run them all the time. Because with seniors, you basically, they need to go to a doctor or this and that at a very specific time. And they're usually handicapped, you know, they gotta. So we probably need to look at the whole thing, you know, in detail. And I mean, the car market's going to heck and things are going to change. I know that, but I don't think we got a grip as to what we need to do really. I mean, we don't have a plan. We don't know what the future holds. And we should just go at this cautiously and I wouldn't be committing a lot of money to any one provider.
We will now take our next speaker.
Oh my gosh, there's a timer up here. That's awesome. My name's Ian Constantine. It's great to see all of you again. Good to see all of you. I guess I just wanted to come up here while I have the opportunity and talk about buses and all the good things I like about them. I don't know how many people everyone thinks lives in Cobb County, but like the number is currently like right around 800,000 people, which is a lot of people. It's like right around what Fulton County has. So we talk about like what infrastructure we want to have here, what we want Cobb County to look like. We also have to remember that this is an increasingly dense county. So what do I think of the green line? I think the green line going away, having gone to the open house, having looked at the plans, you know, I wouldn't be heartbroken if the green line went away. But I would be like interested in what we were getting for our money, right? Like, I want to make sure that the, that the buses that run in Cobb County are serving the citizenry. We've mentioned bus stops, where those bus stops are. We've talked about frequency a lot. I know it is expensive to hire, you know, more drivers or what have you. But at the end of the day, if you want a bus system to carry that many people, you're going to need it to be running every 15, even 10 minutes. And that's going to require a lot of staff. I see traffic in Cobb County as a massive cost for the county. It, it eats into time that people could spend working. It eats into expenses with, with roadware, right? Like traffic is, is a problem for, for our, for our county and for our government and for our expenses. So buses could end up being a cost-saving measure if we could invest in them. They seem to be an all or nothing thing. I wouldn't want to ride a bus that's only like half funded. That's like, you know, it only goes to half the places I want to go to and only half the time. Like I'm going to use it never. Not a quarter of the time, never. So I think it's worth it to invest in our bus systems. And if that means cutting the green line to make it so that people are able to ride these buses, then you know, I guess that's fine. I just want to make sure the money is going to making the bus system better. That's all. All right. That's me.
Are there any other speakers for this public hearing? All right, I'll close the public hearing and we'll cue, oh, yes ma'am. Come on up. It is, but we're going to hear the commuter hearing right after this one. Yes, thank you.
Ready for the next one?
Yes, sir. Unless commissioners have any questions regarding that public hearing for the green circulator service? All right, we can go to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. As background on our next public hearing, CobbLink operates three commuter routes along the 75 corridor. You heard about some of those earlier. That includes routes 100, 101 and 102. CobbLink has coordinated with Gwinnett County, ATL and the ATL on an evaluation of commuter service within Metro Atlanta. Based on this analysis, CobbLink recommends the elimination of these three routes for the following reasons. In accordance with ATL's redefine the ride, ATL is considering increasing service in the 75 corridor, allowing for partnership funding of commuter service as replacement of 100, 101 and 102. This consolidation would streamline commuter service and commuter ridership has declined since the pandemic. CobbLink is a recipient of funding from the Federal Transit Administration and therefore must complete a service equity analysis before considering any modifications. The analysis must be conducted in accordance with the county's Title VI plan to identify any potential negative impacts of the service changes. Prior to board consideration for adoption of any modifications, the service equity analysis includes public input and involvement. Public input for this service modification is being collected through public commenting between April 10th and May 9th, an in-person meeting on April 14th, another in-person meeting scheduled for April 24th from 5:30 to 7:30 at Acworth Elementary School, a joint online meeting on May 6th to include the service modifications of the, the green route just discussed, and then tab review on April 28th. Additionally, tonight's public hearing is part of that public involvement process. Therefore, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing to present the service equity analysis regarding proposed service modifications of the CobbLink commuter service routes 100, 101 and 102.
All righty, thank you Drew. Similar to the last public hearing, we'll take an unlimited number of speakers who can present to the board for up to three minutes on this matter and this matter only. We'll go ahead and open up the hearing and don't forget to state your name before you begin speaking. And yes, there is a timer up there that will let you know when your time is running. All right, we'll take our first speaker. Yes, thank you Commissioner. You can speak twice. So if you spoke at the first hearing, you certainly are welcome to speak in this one.
Hi there, JT Jackson again. So as far as the 101, 102 and 103 being cut, I just want to make sure that we're doing tight coordination with the, I believe it's ATL Express, just to make sure that if we are cutting that, frequency is still going to be there from the routes that they provide. But also in the same vein as what I was mentioning with the green circulator route, I would love like as a citizen for these cuts not to just be budget cuts, but rather, you know, if we start, if we cut these three routes, there's an allocation to some other area within CobbLink to better serve the community as we need it. But thank you.
Hello again, Rob Gillum. I, I heard a little bit of when he was, when this gentleman was talking about some modifications for commuter. Well, I can say that commuter travel is coming back in, in the afternoons becomes an absolute nightmare. In fact, I changed my work schedule to try to go in in the earliest time, 6:00 AM, so I can catch a 3:30, the bus that leaves at 3:30. The bus that leaves downtown Atlanta at four o'clock tends to take two to three times as long to get back because of the level of traffic. Even in the express lane, I've had situations where the 3:30 bus would get me back to the park and ride within 45 to 50 minutes. But the 4:80 bus that leaves at 4:00 PM, it took as long as two hours to get to its park and ride. And that's even going through the, the congested parts or the express freeway. And with respect to discussing comparisons with Gwinnett, one advantage that Gwinnett has is they do have at least some access to the Marta train. The, the Doraville line does go up towards the 85, towards 85 and 285. Cobb County has nothing. Once you start consolidating these bus lines, that's it. We have no other options. They at least have some option to drive partway and then take a, a train downtown. Those of us in Cobb don't. It's either take these buses, which as I mentioned, they're about to be consolidated, not just these three lines into the Express GA 484, but Express GA is going to consolidate five lines into that. So that's eight into one. And I can tell you from, from personal experience over just these past few weeks, ridership is going up. If these lines are, are, are shrunk down, those buses are going to be overcrowded to a point where people will be standing. And they will, I, I've seen that happen before in some situations. That is not safe for them. We're talking, so we're not just talking about costs. We're talking about passenger safety as well. Thank you.
Suzie Clark, go Buckeyes. She's a Michigan fan. Anyway, first time speaking to y'all. Hey, I'm using y'all. Anyway, I'd just like to reiterate what the prior gentleman said earlier about possibly holding off on this decision until we see what the new ridership is. Based on the fact that he said all these government workers are now having to go back to the office. So just hold off and see what happens. Instead of just making the decision now because so many things are changing, given the federal, everybody's pocketbooks. So hold off on, please, and on, on making that decision till maybe another year or so down the road when you can see what has happened to the ridership. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Craig Harfoot. I was just checking with Sam about the routes. Because I remember when I worked around Peachtree Street, 800 Peachtree, you know, the Gwinnett buses were there, the Cobb buses were there and, and they, you know, it's more dependent on the work schedule of the offices that they're trying to serve. And it, it's almost like you need, you don't need them except at certain times, period. And then it's done. And I don't know how much coordination they get with talking to the, the people that are in these buildings. Because I remember way back when Sam was selling Greta, you know, and, and they literally gave the tickets away to get somebody on the bus. It couldn't, you know, nobody wanted to get on the bus. So I mean, some of the speakers act like, yeah, we need to make everyone ride the bus and get off the road. But that isn't the way it works. I mean, people, life happens, you know, finances happen. And then when a need arises, they will ask. You know what I mean? It's almost like it, it's, it's need driven. It's not, we're going to make you do this. And I mean, that's what, everything about government, they're always trying to go, you need to do, shove you in a bag, you know? So anyhow, I, I, and I also, what I noted is that they were cutting Greta and, and some of these things in Gwinnett and other counties. They're, they're just done with it. And the whole thing about, you know, I watched when we had 285s, two lanes. And all we did was widen roads, widen roads. They built 400 and, and it, the, the problem is if you keep adding people and you keep adding roads, you're going to have congestion. And we've got it horribly. And the best thing that happened was work from home. I mean, the roads cleared up. The pandemic, you could actually drive around Atlanta, you know? Funny thing. But you know, there's an end to this. It's a pyramid scheme, you know? It's like, oh yeah, bring in more, bring in more, bring in more, more and more problems, more and more costs, and then it's unaffordable. Transportation's unaffordable, housing's unaffordable, food's unaffordable. And, and we're, we're right up against that now. We're just going to see the end of it. So you gotta be smart with our money.
Hi, Sam Foster. So I think this is a similar situation to the circulator where I guess probably not now because obviously we're dealing with some interesting things at the federal level. There probably will be extra commuters coming from Cobb to Atlanta. So this route might actually be more useful going into the future. But one thing I, I think is a problem that we have is that we try to design our system in general, not only these commuter routes, but to be specifically for commuters, or people who are trying to get from point A to point B in a very niche way that the vast majority of people are, are not trying to get around in. I think if this were to be cut, we should probably focus on how can we, because this is a, this is a corridor that's traveled by people at all times of day, but commuters are prioritized on this route. How can we make it so whatever replaces it is, is competitive? And how can we make it competitive with driving? Because I think the, well, not I think, the majority of people own a car. If this route just goes away, then a lot of them are just going to go back to driving. How can we make it so that the service that comes after is competitive with driving? What if we looked at some right of way along this route that we could make prioritize transit in some way? I don't know. Something, something that would make it so that whatever comes after isn't worse. Obviously, Express is going through budget cuts, already went through budget cuts. We don't have the funding that we want. And consolidating routes is not really the best way to increase ridership or make a system more useful. I think maybe improving the Rapid 10 in some ways could probably make up for a lot of what this route serves. Obviously not all of it because the Rapid 10 doesn't go all the way up to Acworth. But definitely would love if we looked at trying to make sure, again, whatever comes after is competitive with driving so that we're not just creating another commuter route or just siphoning it off to Express. We're creating something that's competitive for everyone to use and is going to serve everyone who wants to get to Atlanta at any time of day. Thank you.
Donald Barth. I've had the pleasure of taking the 101. There was nothing better than to get up early enough to go catch the 101 and it took you further down into Atlanta. The 10 carried you to the Arts Center Station. Then you had to progress further using the Marta train. Now understand that when I was on the bus, I was doing casual travel, whatever I wanted to do. Megabus was invented. I could get on the CCT, hop downtown and get on a bus going somewhere for a dollar, $1. Why did I get on that bus? $1. Where was I going? Wherever the hell $1 would take me. Now, I want y'all to understand that this 101 was full of people that were going to work. They were full of people going to work. I'm the one that was being out there. They were going to work. And to get rid of a bus system this early, that we're not sure why we're getting rid of it, of course, we're going to save some money. Who's in charge? Of course, I love my Drew and Drew's not the one driving the bus. He's not saying where these bus routes are going. Drew's got airport to watch, highways to watch. Somebody is not doing their homework with the bus. We wasted a ton of money. We're using a ton of excuses like there was no income. We were losing money. Well, no wonder. The fare boxes were broken. The fare boxes were broken. Was that to intentionally put people there to force the M's bus? Or was that during the transition while the ATL from Atlanta was changing the fare boxes? We all have to use the same fare box because we use the same card to travel in and out. We have to come up with a solution. I'm not happy with the TAD, the Transportation Authority Board, TAD. I, I'm just not happy with that. I went to their meetings and I was unimpressed. I've met some great people. Don't get me wrong. I don't get along with everybody. So you meet some people, you know that their heart was in the right place. I met some people, all they wanted to be was yes people. We have to fix this bus system, and it's fixable. There are solutions to this problem. So if you think we've gotta start cutting before we find a solution, I don't think so. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Katniss. I, uh, I'm from East Cobb. I grew up there and I wanted to reiterate some of the points that other people were making. Um, especially, uh, cause I grew up like seeing all the, uh, old, uh, East Cobb lines, uh, in that area. And for me, like, I, until I was sixteen, I could basically go nowhere because I couldn't even walk out of my, uh, street, uh, cause there was no sidewalk. So, and I, if I had, wanted to go across, I had to run across this hill where cars would constantly be speeding ten to fifteen miles per hour, uh, over the speed limit. And I'm saying this because, um, like with a line like this, I actually had to go into the city a lot for music stuff, um, for high school music stuff. And so my, if my mom wasn't free, I couldn't go. And so, uh, like, various points that were brought up earlier, it's without like an alternative system that will increase ridership and like competitive, uh, compete with cars. I'm concerned about these lines being eliminated. Uh, traffic's not a new problem in Cobb. It's been a known problem acknowledged by the board since at least the seventies that it would become an issue, and it's only become worse then. Every time I'm driving in or out of the city, I'm alwa- I almost always get someone who merges into my car on the way over, which is not fun. Um, and I would ride the buses if there was, uh, more accessible routes, but there just aren't. Uh, but point just being, if there's, uh, not more, uh, like a clear plan for improving ridership into the future, uh, I think we should, uh, hold off on the eliminations. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? All right, not seeing any. I'll close the hearing and see if commissioners have any questions for our director. I do have a question for you, Drew. I know the ATL is also assessing and cutting some of their routes. I heard a comment about eight of their commuter lines being consolidated into one line. Are you familiar with that stat?
I, I know ATL runs, uh, service all throughout Metro Atlanta, uh, not just Cobb and Gwinnett on the north side, but also to some of the counties on the south side. And their, uh, redefine, the, the ride analysis looked at that and the entirety of that, of that commuter service. Uh, so I understand that there were consolidations and cuts as part of that. Admittedly, our focus was on Cobb. I would have to look at their recommendations to determine the full scope.
Okay, just didn't know if that was central to Cobb or broader. All right. Commissioners, I don't know if there are any other questions, but I appreciate the observations shared by our speakers, and I know that our staff will be taking those into consideration as they help guide us in what happens next. So, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. I believe this takes us to our first public comment, and I'll turn things over to our county attorney.
Thank you, Chair Olin. As the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review some of those related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of our organization. All comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. Comments should not be slanderous. The board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And as has been referenced already earlier, there is a three-minute timer on the podium. The first public speaker is Paul Hurley.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Yes.
My name is Paul Hurley. I'm here in regards to some property in Kennesaw Acres in, uh, Kennesaw. There's a road specifically named Loring Way. And, uh, in the mid eight, it's the neighborhood was established in fifty-seven. In the mid eighties, they upgraded all the roads in the neighborhood and excluded Loring Way. And in nineteen ninety-one, I spoke in front of this commission, and they agreed unanimously, unanimously to raise the road to the standards of all the other roads in the neighborhood. They even offered curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, which I turned down because they didn't match the neighborhood. Well, over time, things have changed to what we were going to do, and we had access to sewer. So instead of our intentional original three houses, we can now put nine on one side of the road and, um, four on the other. And, uh, been doing this since ninety-one. And everything's gone good, just trying to get a land disturbance permit. But somehow the, uh, there's a fog that's grown that we are a new subdivision. And we are Kennesaw Acres. That's what the commissioners agreed in ninety-one. They gave me a, um, exemption from the curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, which they made me go to the zoning board and do again. And the, uh, Mr. Griffin even agreed that in that meeting, you had said, no, there's no curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. So I'm trying to follow all the rules, but what keeps happening is the rules keep changing. And all I ask, all I'm asking today is that the road be a public road. That nobody will truly acknowledge it's a public road. And if it is, I still have to repave it and do stuff. Don't know why. The board was so gracious, they put a cul-de-sac in there, not a cul-de-sac in the neighborhood. DOT says it's not good enough, so I need to fix it. County road, still don't get it. And then they wanna say it's a new subdivision, let's change the creek buffers. It eliminates lots. They wanna say the lots are grandfathered, but then they say, but they still gotta be a certain square footage. They're a little small, but they're grandfathered. And one day they're good enough, next day they're not. So all I'm really asking for here today is that we accept this road that you all upgraded and did a fantastic job with. We understand that I wanna live by the same conditions everyone else, building single houses. I'm not a developer. And that just the standards of everyone else in the neighborhood are met to county standards. I'm willing to follow them all. I've done the engineering. I'm willing to put in the water lines. I'm putting in the sewer lines. It's not cheap, but I can't afford to fix a county road that you gave me that's gorgeous. It's a beautiful road. And so for the people that made it in your name to keep saying it's not good enough, I, I'm confused. And so I just need some clarity and help establishing grandfathering this area as the rest of Kennesaw Acres. Thank you so much for your consideration.
The next public speaker is JT Jackson.
Yes, as you leave, um, our DOT director was facilitating our public hearings. He may be able to speak with you, and I believe our community development director is here as well. You're welcome. Thank you.
Hey there, JT Jackson, again. Uh, originally wanted to come up here and talk on transit, but I got a chance to get that all out earlier. Uh, so I'll just, uh, speak on some things I'm grateful for in the county. Uh, I really do appreciate Cumberland. I feel like I've come up here and said that every time I've made a comment, but it's really a wonderful place to live. Uh, really excited to see the changes that are coming to Palisades. That's a place really special to me. I proposed to my fiancee there last year, so really excited to see what y'all have cooked, cooked up for the space for this summer, uh, when we get, uh, the weather heats up and we're able to go tubing down the hooch. Uh, I really appreciate, uh, the Mountain to River Trail. Uh, that's a really like useful trail, uh, in Cobb. The connection to it from where I am on Acres Mill is great. Uh, if I wanna go, you know, meet my friends in downtown Smyrna, I can hop on my bike, do it safely, pretty quickly, sometimes quicker than being in a car. Uh, if I wanna go to the Marietta Square, get a real workout in, uh, I can do that. I've even used Mountain to Trail, uh, the connection it has with, uh, Noonday Creek up in Kennesaw. Uh, you know, that makes for an adventure of a day. You know, that day we got engaged, uh, we did a whole mountain to river. We hiked Kennesaw Mountain, took our bikes from Kennesaw Mountain back home to, uh, the Chattahoochee, uh, and then went tubing down, you know, the hooch. Uh, so yeah, there's just so much in Cobb County to be grateful for. Uh, even the Braves who are on a four-game win streak, uh, let's put that on the record. They're hot right now. Sean Murphy has glasses. He can, he can hit the ball right now. Uh, but yeah, uh, I do really appreciate living in Cobb County and appreciate the work that y'all do for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sam Foster.
Fiancee, you should be proud. Not every day a fiancee gets a shout-out during public comment. Be proud.
Sam Foster, uh, like JT, I was gonna come up here to speak about transit. Already got some ideas out, so, uh, I guess we'll talk about transit, but, uh, not, not everything that I wanted to talk about, cause got some of it out already. Um, so with the failure of the referendum last year, I've, I've been thinking about what comes next and, and how, how we can fix the hole that we have ourselves in. I think something that I've been telling myself and I've been thinking about is, if we all got together tomorrow and we decided that Cobb Link wasn't going to exist anymore, I, I genuinely think sadly, the vast majority of the people in this county would not care. When we start to look at it from that perspective, we start to realize that what we're dealing with is not necessarily a funding issue, although it is a problem. We're dealing with the community buying issue. We have to use the resources that we have right now to try and make this a system people are actually going to use to, for their daily, uh, needs, getting from point A to point B. Um, or else the system is going to die. I know some people would, uh, cheer that on. But I think that public transit should be invested in because it has unique benefits over, uh, private transportation like cars. I view public transportation not necessarily as something that is going to be a leg up for the poor, or something that we're subsidizing just for the sake of it. It really is something that we're investing in because it allows us to do more with less. Instead of expanding a road like Cobb Parkway, although we already did it, to eight lanes or something, or six lanes, we can, uh, with all, other modes of transportation, carry the same capacity and be just as productive without having to acquire as much right-of-way. And that's a really powerful thing that I don't think we really utilize as much around Metro Atlanta. Uh, so in order to make this a system that everyone's going to use, we're going to have to look at different things, like making sure the buses arrive on time, making sure that, uh, the buses run more frequently for our most-used routes. We're gonna have to look at our land use policy around some of our transit corridors. These transfer centers shouldn't really be transfer centers. They should be centers of gathering for a community, and that by itself will boost ridership. I already know that we're talking about moving to transit centers, and that's a great opportunity to, to do that as well. There are so many different things that we can do, uh, and in many ways, we tried the easy way with the referendum. Now we're gonna have to do it the hard way. Uh, but this is going to be on a longer timeframe, five to ten years, uh, maybe longer. But we can dig ourselves out of this hole if we're willing to make those decisions and willing to give transit a spotlight, uh, in, uh, in a way that a growing community like Cobb County deserves. I, I think that's everything. Thank you.
The next speaker is Donald Barth.
Donald Barth. Good evening, ladies. Did you hear the good evening, ladies? How many more times am I gonna get to say that? With the election coming, I may have to change my greeting a bit. We'll see. In the meantime, I just wanna talk to you. Some of the things we see when we're out on the media is, there was some recent talk about the Cobb Police and the Cobb Sheriff, and the sheriff has more than everybody else. Bueno. When I call nine-one-one, I don't care who comes, as long as they can see better than I am and they have a gun. Two things I need, them to see better than me and they have a gun. You don't want me running around the way I see with a gun, with lots of bullets. I can only force my way that way. So what I'm gonna tell you is Cobb Police have fallen behind, and that's no reflection on the police department. We've got to get the Cobb Police back up, but we certainly don't need to take the sheriff down to do that. There's enough room in this county for me to have city police, me to have the Cobb County Police, and me to have some Cobb County Sheriff. So far, I haven't needed all of that, and I hope it never comes to that. But one of the things we have to take into consideration is tax dollars. And when I was at the sheriff's little event over here at the Strand, man, he's, he loves his toys. He wants to have the best of everything, and I want him to have it, provided we can afford it. If we can't afford it, I'm sorry, dude, you're gonna have to have a raffle. I would raffle off the horses before I'd go without something he thinks is gonna save somebody's life. In the meantime, the Cobb County Police, I was able to brag this week about Marietta. David Beam, our chief, was able to say that we were a hundred percent full. We had a waiting list, and we had so many officers, we could address the trivial things in Marietta, the things that normally they can't respond to. One day, I hope you can get the Cobb County Police Department staffed so that they too can address things. We can't let things go. People standing on the corner, pandering, you know, there's, you're not gonna fix homelessness. I'm not even gonna ask you to try. I'm gonna ask you to be patient with it and find solutions. We have to look for solutions, not hope it goes away. It's not going away. Other than that, you heard what I had to say tonight, and I would like to throw out one name.
Mr. Barth, your, your time's up. Next public speaker is Christine Rosman.
Hi, Christine Rosman. So the name Tracy Stevenson, to get him on the transportation board. Um, I wanted to talk about something that's on, I think, the consent items, and that is that two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that is supposed to go to, I have to look at my note now. Oh, yeah, the license plate reader. So in theory, that's good, cause then you catch the bad guys. But in reality, it's like really an infringement on us and our privacy as citizens. And, you know, like, that's probably like the same reason why you don't want like a GPS on every license plate too, to know where everybody is. It's an infringement on our rights as citizens. And the other thing I wanted to say too is that the, in theory, this thing about the buses, and in theory, it would be great if everybody would be riding a bus. But in reality, nobody's riding it. And so, and it does have to be modified. And, I mean, it's kind of like, in theory, it'd be great if everybody, you know, did home-cooked meals every night of the week, but the reality is, there's a lot of drive-through. And that's, it's just the reality of it. And it's the reality that buses aren't being used, and there does need to be another solution. And again, I think the vouchers might be an idea. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Suzy Clark.
I'll talk about my sign later. Um, but meanwhile...
Ma'am, you need to state your name, please.
Oh, Suzy Clark, I'm sorry. Um, I did- I did tell you, now this is my second time speaking to you. But one thing I, well, been wanting, I've been coming for a while, and some of the comments kind of dismay me. So, last time I was able to come, it was lots of, lots and lots of public comment about the, the Board or the Board of Commissions not think, excuse me. There was evidently a rumor that the Board of Commissions was not going to opt out of the new law that was instituted or whatever in the state with their, in relations to the real estate taxes and how they were computed. And evidently, that was a rumor, and so I don't know who... Anyway, a lot of, I felt, a lot of my time, and especially a lot of your commissioners' time and everybody else listening, spent on something that wasn't necessarily a reality. So, maybe rumors should be fact-checked. Anyway, second thing, so, second thing, and this was my idea, my note beforehand, I wanted to thank you guys, you women, for your work. I think this is a great county that I moved into almost nine years ago, and I'm so pleased that you guys really care about what you're doing. Oh, in that regard, Jerika, Jerika Richardson, who was, we'll say, let go as Commissioner, I've heard from some of her constituents that she would reply to emails, up to 500 a day. So, I applaud her for that, and I hope the next Commissioner and you guys try to step up to that, very responsive to her constituents. Yeah, she was. So, anyways, okay, I'm hoping that, like a lot of companies, counties, schools, on and on in government are cutting some DEI. Ooh, I got to go fast. I hope that Cobb County isn't embracing that and cutting out DEI. Please, it is necessary. We love everybody. I love immigrants, I love every, anyway, please do not do that. My, I need my social security now. I'm sure a lot of anybody old out there needs that.
Ms. Clark, I'm sorry, your time's up. Mr. Harfoot, you're the next public speaker.
And Chair Lady, my name's Craig Harfoot. I, I know I've spoken many, many times about all kinds of stuff, but lately, I've been, I'm going to tell all of you, you should look up on YouTube this Stefan Burns, and he's a, actually, he's a space weather reporter, and he's brilliant. He's a geophysicist, and he explains what's going on with the solar coronal mass ejections. And there, he's got evidence, it's all related to the earthquakes. It's all related to the weather and the tornadoes and the extreme weather. And yet, all our media says, oh, it's climate change. But, you know, they quit saying greenhouse gas, at least they're, but, but the deal is, the sun controls all of this, and then the sooner we get aware of that and, and we're aware of all the things going on, we can quit talking about stupid things that divide us. You know, we need to look at solutions. But the droughts and famines and all that stuff, I mean, they've happened all through the millennia. Seven years of plenty, seven years of famine, and, and it's, it's the planets and the sun and all this stuff, and our world interacts, and it's, it's what we should truly be attuned to. And we should all be growing gardens right now because food, you know, they're, they're, they're killing the farmers across this country, and they're doing all kinds of stupid with water. And they're trying to put farmers in Washington State out of business, the state of Washington. And, and here in Cobb, it's easy to grow food. Anything you eat, you take the seeds out, put it in the ground, it'll grow. And we don't have to be food insecure. I mean, we can be proactive. And, and transportation, yes, we need to look at it, but the whole thing becomes cost-effectiveness. You know, it's always cost of, what do you do? And, and then, express buses were quick, but a regular bus, stop, 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 very slow. You know, it's, it's not, you're not going to get anywhere fast doing that. So, they tried car pools, they tried express lanes, we tried all this stuff, and none of it worked. Nobody did it. So, the best solution I can tell you is what I try to tell my kids. You should live real close to where you work, and it, it should be a plan. And, and, and if you don't do that, and you spend an hour driving up to Dawsonville to work in Cobb County or something, that's stupid.
Mr. Harfoot, your, your time's up. Chairwoman, this is the last speaker.
Thank you for all of our speakers this evening during our public comment, and again, yet, during our public hearing. That now takes us to our consent agenda, and the matters on the consent agenda have been scrolling on the screen prior to the meeting, and we'll do so afterwards. The matters on consent, we vote in bank all at one time. And Commissioners, we do have one item to add to our agenda. I'll make a motion that we add the following item: To approve the certification of the estimated rollback rate for the current year as required by House Bill 92, signed into law by the Governor on April 1st, 2025.
Second.
Thank you.
Is this to add it to consent?
Yes, it's to add it to consent. And for those of you who are here with us tonight or watching, this impacts House Bill 581, which was referred to by our last speaker. We are required by law, that was signed on April 1st, to certify the estimated rollback for 2025 before we send out assessment notices. And that is what we are doing this evening. So, with that, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by Commissioners? All right, I'll call the question. The motion carries 4-0. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve our consent agenda as it was just revised and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, that takes us now to our regular agenda, and our first subject matter is transportation.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
DOT has two items on the regular tab for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $705,730 for Chastain Road at Busby Drive, Project Number B2445, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. And our final item this evening is to recommend the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under state law, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on two parcels on Pete Shaw Road sidewalk, Project Number B2732, adopt resolutions and orders in form substantially similar to the attached and as approved by the county attorney's office, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell.
Before I make a motion, I'd like to comment, if I may. The sidewalks on Pete Shaw Road were, in the last four or five years, were put in halfway down to Steinhour, which is where Lassiter High School, it goes by their field and everything. So, before we began the 2022 SPOS list for sidewalks and, and resurfacing, the neighbors from where the sidewalks ended on Pete Shaw up to Sandy Plains Road had a petition and requested sidewalks to continue to Sandy Plains for the full length of Pete Shaw Road. So, I know that DOT, our right-of-way acquisitions, Janice has been working with the folks in this area, and there are two that are not agreeable to acquisition of right-of-way. So, and I know that we do condemnation as a last resort, and I would like to meet with these folks, with you and Janice, before anything is done. So, I'll make a motion to approve the condemnation with the condition that we meet with them and not do anything until we can come to, hopefully, a solution.
Chairwoman, okay. So, just as a, as a recommendation, we, should, should this be approved, we do continue to coordinate. One property owner is opposed to the, the project in, in principle. The other has a concern about the drainage alignment in terms of exactly what that drainage infrastructure looks like. Just to walk through the process, should condemnation authority be granted, it, it does come as, still a last resort. We continue to coordinate and cooperate and coordinate with, with those property owners as much as we possibly can to work out a feasible solution. It would be my recommendation that staff address this, should condemnation be approved, through the typical condemnation process, just directly between staff and that property owner as it is a legal proceeding, understanding that the District Commissioner, Commissioner, you're certainly welcome to, to reach out separate from the condemnation process to any of your constituents. But I would recommend that this be handled as a, as a legal proceeding, should it be approved. If there is a request to hold it, we can certainly withhold this, this agenda item if that is the preference as well.
Yes, and thank you for sharing that process with us. It's been a while since I've had to deal with this directly as a district commissioner, but I know that when we do vote on these, it does allow for those negotiations to continue. But considering what you said, is it better to hold it than for us to vote on this tonight to allow for these discussions to occur without concern for it impacting a legal process?
So, I, I guess the, the two, the two paths that, that I would recommend, and we will take direction from the Board. One would be, Commissioner, if you would like to, to reach out and speak with that, with the residents, it would be my preference not to move forward with this agenda at this time. If the, the direction is to move forward with the condemnations, my recommendation would then be, be to allow the, the real estate and legal professionals to proceed with the process from there.
Okay.
Well, I have heard from one of these, that the drainage, the culvert or that is going to be in their front yard is the issue. So, I, I'd like to hold it until I can speak further with them and see what we can work out.
Okay, and for our clerks, I can't recall, did we have a motion first?
Yeah, I made a motion. Well, I did make a motion to approve with a condition, so...
Can you with...
Can I withdraw that motion and make a motion to hold it?
Did it have a second to it? No, yeah, there wasn't a second, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we're fine, just holding it. Okay, yeah.
Do I need to make a motion to hold it? Okay. I make a motion that we hold Agenda Item Number 27 for further review and discussion and to come back.
As, as a matter of procedure, would it be cleaner if we just withdrew the agenda item and brought it back at a later date?
That, that would be fine. You could do it, you could do it either way, so.
If, Commissioner, if you're agreeable to that, I would recommend that we...
So, my final motion will be to withdraw...
No, I think he's just saying he's going to, we don't want to do a motion.
Okay, sorry.
I just have one question. We used to provide a percentage of the property that's being taken, and I don't see that here. With this project, is it just impacting the right-of-way of their front yard? Nobody's, property is going to be wholly or...
It's on the attachments. Drop further.
It is, so, for parcel number four...
Okay, I'm looking at Attachment 1.
That's, that's right. So, the, the right-of-way, the fee simple right-of-way is 2,623 square feet. It does leave close to three acres after the taking. And then, if you skip two pages for parcel number six, because there are two parcels associated with this particular, that, that fee simple taking is the 1,439 square feet. We, we do put in here, just to explain the differences, fee simple right-of-way would be the permanent property that would be acquired for fair and adequate compensation, 100% to be owned by the county. A temporary construction easement is only utilized during the, the duration of the construction, so there is a percentage compensation for that because that does revert back to the property owner. And then a temporary driveway easement is not compensable, but it does identify the area of which the driveway would need to be rebuilt. So, then that becomes authority to come in there, rebuild that driveway, to tie in the grades to the revised right-of-way.
Okay, so this is just at the front of their property, I'm presuming?
That, that's correct. This would be a strip for both, a strip along the front of the properties for, for the sidewalk.
And we have made other improvements on Pete Shaw so that there are the accidents and things that have happened with that curve, and, and so it's kind of delicate.
Understood. All right, thank you, Drew, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. That takes us to our second public comment.
There's no one else who's signed up, Chair.
All right, then we are now at the appointments tab, and I am pleased to announce the appointment of Nadia Fawcett to the Planning Commission. She is replacing Stephen Vault, who has served well, and hate to see him go. I know he's had a lot of constraints due to his work, but very pleased to see that Nadia is stepping up to serve in that position. That is the only appointment we have for this evening, and that now takes us to the Commissioners' Public Address. Okay, Commissioner Gamble, whenever you're ready, you can begin.
Today, I had the honor of presenting to the National Society the Sons of the American Revolution with the Patriots' Day Proclamation. Patriots' Day is a U.S. holiday commemorating the battles of Lexington and Concord, the first battles of the American Revolutionary War fought on April 19th, 1775. It honors the bravery of the first American patriots who stood up for independence from British rule. Thank you to all who joined us today for this presentation. And lastly, our pickleball tournament to support Meals on Wheels is back. This is an annual mixed doubles pickleball tournament this year, benefiting the Cobb Senior Services Meals on Wheels program. It's hosted by Cobb Parks and Senior Services. This fun and competitive event features county employees raising funds to support seniors in our community. You can come watch the action at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, May 2nd, at the J.R. Miller Park Event Center at 2245 Callaway Road in Marietta. And you can help Commissioner Gamble bring home the win by donating today, and be sure to list Team Gamble with your contribution. You can scan the QR code to donate and support our Senior Services Meals on Wheels. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. We are now at Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. Happy 50th anniversary to Walton-H... Happy 50th anniversary to Walton High School. On Saturday, I had the pleasure of presenting a proclamation to the principal at Walton High School in recognition of their 50th anniversary. It was a great afternoon of fanfare and food in the bus lanes, musical performances in the theater, the Walton Orchestra magnificent concert, and a 50th retrospective in the Media Library. Happy anniversary to Walton High School. Today is Earth Day, and there are a lot of activities that Keep Cobb Beautiful is sponsoring, um, this weekend and next week. Saturday, April 26th, there will be three locations now, one in District 3 at the Tim D. Lee Senior Center at 3332 Sandy Plains Road for disposal of unused and expired medications. Um, there's also one in Precinct 1 at the Superstation and Freeman Pool in South Cobb at 4025, Freeman Pool Senior Center, 4025 Hurt Road. So bring all your expired medication and dispose of it properly at these events. The fishing rodeo is returning to Hyde Farm Park, Hyde Park. Grab your fishing gear and try to reel in the big one at the Kids Fishing Rodeo, 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. this Saturday, April 26th, at Hyde Farm Park, 726 Hyde Road. Kids aged 3 to 16, along with their parents or guardian, can partake in a thrilling fishing adventure. The event will happen rain or shine. The entry fee is $5 per child, and you can register at cobbcounty.org/parks. And last but not least, um, I know most of y'all remember the old Sprayberry Crossing at the corner of Piedmont and Sandy Plains. This was our first deemed blighted property that went to court. And on May the 8th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., they are having the grand opening of the 55 and older senior apartments. They're, they're leasing now, and they're also, the townhomes that are slated for this location are under construction, and we'll get an update on that. So you're all invited to come celebrate, May the 8th, from 3:00 to 7:00, 2648 Sandy Plains Road. There are some flyers in the back with the QR code that you can RSVP if you, um, are able to come. So we look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. We are now at Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Chair. Okay. District 4 News and Updates. Although Earth Day recognized today, April 22nd is nearly over, its message continues to resonate throughout Cobb County and our community every single day. As we reflect on this year's theme, Planet versus Plastics, I'm reminded of the power we each hold individually and collectively to protect our environment. Whether we're planting trees, reducing waste, or advocating for sustainable practices, every effort counts. These actions, big and small, build a healthier, more vibrant future for our children and for generations still to come. Let's not let Earth Day be just one day on the calendar. Let's commit to treating every day like Earth Day, caring for our natural resources with intention, with pride, and with love for the place we all call home. I'm excited to invite you to join Senior Services at the grand opening of the Ostel Senior Center on Friday, April 25th, at 10:30 a.m. Located at 4915 Ostel Powder Springs Road Southwest, this beautifully renovated center has been thoughtfully updated to better serve our, our seniors. It was an honor to utilize my Board of Commissioners capital contingency funds to renovate and modernize the kitchen for meals to be served warm on site. Updates also include two brand-new activity rooms, refreshed bathrooms, and new administrative office space, stylish new furniture, and yes, even a putting green. There's so much to celebrate, so come out and take a tour, connect with neighbors, and explore the wide range of programs designed to keep our seniors engaged, active, and thriving. To RSVP for the ribbon cutting, call Senior Services at 770-819-3200. And finally, mark your calendars for the annual Taste of Mabelton happening Saturday, May 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Maple House Complex located at 5239 Floyd Road in Mabelton. This family-friendly festival is back and is bigger and better than ever. It kicks off with a high-energy parade featuring performances by the Pebblebrook High School Mighty Marching Machine, South Cobb High School marching band, the Osborne Red Sea of Sound, and the vibrant folkloric dancing of the T.E.O.T.L. Foundation. Throughout the day, attendees can enjoy live music from local performers, delicious bites from more than 15 food vendors, a fun-filled kids' zone, and a bustling marketplace showcasing local artisans and community groups. Hosted by the Mabelton Improvement Coalition, the Taste of Mabelton is a true celebration of community spirit, culture, and connection. Thank you.
All righty. So I'll be kicking off a first of a series of meetings to start to address the strategic areas of our strategic plan, and the first one is in the area of effective and efficient government. We will be holding a meeting on May 1st, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. right here, so you can learn more about Cobb County and share with us your observations and how we can best serve you as effectively and efficiently as possible. You can RSVP on Eventbrite, and if you sign up for our newsletter, you will actually see a direct link to the Eventbrite landing page. Excuse me, this, oh, we, did we change slides? Okay, yes, to the, um, Eventbrite landing page. All right, we'll go to the next event. Also on Eventbrite, you can sign up for the Community State of the County Address. That will be held on Wednesday, May 14th, at the Riverside Epicenter at 6:30 p.m. Again, that event will be on Eventbrite, and this is free to anyone that, um, RSVPs for the event. We will have a State of the County for the Business Community at the Cobb Chambers Monday Marquee Event in June. That concludes my presentations for this evening. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Certainly want to thank our speakers for participating and providing some insight as to how we can best address mobility in Cobb County. We look forward to considering those remarks as we determine how we'll, uh, move forward with the circulator and the express routes. And our meeting, I believe, is now adjourned. Thank you, and have a great evening.